Cat TV is celebrating 30 years of community media. Help support Cat TV's next 30 years by becoming a member today. Your membership will help us continue covering meaningful, local content. Thank you for supporting your local community media station.
My name is Arv Whitman, Chairman of the Shasbury Select Board, and I'd like to call this meeting of the Shasbury Select Board to order on Monday, March 21st, 2022, at 6:30. My first order of business, is there anybody that has a conflict of interest with what is shown on the agenda?
No.
We have minutes that were circulated to you, minutes of Monday, March 7th. Let's see, Joe, I don't think you were here. Just tell me, all right, okay? Entertain a motion to accept the minutes as presented.
So moved.
Moved by Tony.
Second.
Second by Martha. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? So carried. 5-0-0. Okay, warrants. We have two warrants. The first is a payroll warrant for a total of $25,653.29.
So moved.
Moved by Tony.
Second.
Second by Mike. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? So carried. 5-0-0. Thank you. Yeah, just make a point. Next is warrant number 29 for a total of $64,245.22.
So moved.
So moved by Tony.
Second.
Second by Joe. Items over $1,000. ANK Agro Services for $37.50 and $13.18, that's for gravel this time of the year. And then we have quite a few for Appalachia Salt, $27.64, $55.75, $28.10. Blue Cross Blue Shield of Vermont, $68.44. Business Card Services, well, Bennington County Sheriff's for $18.45. Business Card Services for $14.91. Fuel, $19.27, $20.75 for fuel. Goldstein Architects, Goldstone Architects, $23.58.
That was the last bill for the ramps at the transfer station.
And TAM, $76.66, and Wallingford Crush Stone, $36.37. Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? So carried. Anybody have any public comments? I do. If you haven't read the paper, we have some good news that some of MacMolding, which is a manufacturing company up in Arlington, has signed a lease for a good portion of the Stanley Tool Building. They're using it for storage and with the intent of moving some manufacturing down here. President Mac called me to tell me the good news, and he said that he's very impressed with Bernstein. They've kept the building up heated all the way along, so there's no broken pipes or leaks or anything else like that. He says it's a beautiful place. So hopefully this will be the start of something more, maybe with some other, with Mac in there, maybe some other companies will see the need to join in because there's a lot of building down there. It's massive. So that's the good news. Anybody else have any public comments? Or announcements? So on the public comments, is there anybody that has a public comment? We have a couple people. So the first order of business is the town's resolution for the water war on Ukraine. Carl Corman, your committee has come up with something, and we'd like you to present it to us.
Thank you. Good evening, everybody. I have provided each of you a copy of the comments that I'm going to be reading into the record. But before I read the resolution, I'd like to explain briefly how this came about. After witnessing Russia's incessant attacks on Ukrainian civilians and the cities, many of us in Shasbury wanted to do something as a community, even if it was just symbolic, to show our unified support for the bravery of Ukrainian people against the Russian aggression. Therefore, a number of Shasbury residents joined together to sponsor a draft town resolution, which is entitled, "A Resolution of the Town of Shasbury, Vermont, Condemning the Unprovoked Invasion of the Sovereign Nation of Ukraine by Russia," which has been submitted to the Slight Report this evening for approval and adoption. Those sponsors include David Durfee, Alice Miller, Magdalena Lizzatequa, Subaluthis, Tom Hunchark, Michael Foley, Jan Leslie, Carolyn Doris Corman, Naomi Miller, Betsy Havensville, Andrea Baki, Joan Dornhofa, Bob and Barbara Sarvis, and Jim and Ann Cormier. Moreover, it's understood that the board has received various comments of support for the proposal from other participants in Shasbury, specifically from Shasbury Civic Organization, We the People of Shasbury, which I'm a member, which by the way is open to everyone in Shasbury. Finally, although not part of the resolution, I would request that the board consider enacting three further actions relating to this resolution. First, that the board provide a copy of the resolution to the Ukrainian Embassy and our state and federal elected officials. Second, that the town provide some form of visible public support for the people of Ukraine, such as a statement on the town sandwich board or posting a statement in support of the resolution in Cole Hall. And thirdly, consider establishing a voluntary town donation venue where residents can donate whatever they wish. Those donations can be provided to a, how do I go on? To an appropriate Ukraine relief agency, a relief fund as a formal town of Shasbury contribution in support of the people of Ukraine. I note that because many of us have been giving things individually, but I thought it would be nice for those that don't feel comfortable perhaps donating a couple dollars here or there, but to put it in and that the town actually do something, to giving, again, some symbolic effort. The resolution that is before you reads is follows. "A Resolution of the Town of Shasbury, Vermont, Condemning the Unprovoked Invasion of the Sovereign Nation of Ukraine by Russia. Whereas the unprovoked ruthless and continuing invasion of the free and independent nation of Ukraine by Russia has violated every tenet of international law and basic morality, and whereas despite the remarkable defense and extraordinary courage of the Ukrainian people, Russia continues its illegal invasion and indiscriminate bombing of innocent victims, churches, schools, monuments, hospitals, and civilian homes in the form of war crimes. And whereas the town of Shasbury, Vermont stands with all other free, freedom-loving people and governments worldwide in uniform support of the nation of Ukraine, its government and its people. And whereas the town of Shasbury calls upon Russia to halt this deadly and unconscionable aggression against a peaceful neighbor. Now, therefore, the air resolved by the Select Board of the Town of Shasbury, Vermont, speaking on behalf of the people of Shasbury, Vermont, as follows. Section 1, recitals. That each of the above stated recitals are hereby adopted, confirmed, and incorporated herein. Section 2. That Shasbury Select Board condemns in its strongest terms the illegal invasion of the sovereign nation of Ukraine by the nation of Russia. 3. That the Shasbury Select Board expresses its support for the people and the government of the sovereign nation of Ukraine. And finally, 4. That this Shasbury Select Board encourages all the people of Shasbury, Vermont, to express their personal support for the people and government of Ukraine in whatever legal and appropriate manner they may so wish. Respectfully submitted to the Shasbury Select Board for approval and draft resolution by the designated sponsor."
Thank you, Carl. According to Robert's rules, there really shouldn't have any discussion until there's a motion, so I entertain a motion.
So moved. For discussion.
Well, let's, we'll make a motion that we adopt this.
Okay, then I will. Motion to adopt this resolution.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Tony. Now we're open for discussion.
So I'd like to just make a comment. I have had over 25 members of the community reach out to me via my Select Board email address to talk about this and to express strong support. I think there's a lot of folks that are thinking about this issue right now, and I think that it would be a nice symbolic gesture to do. And I also agree that if we do pass this, that it would be very good to put it out to kind of the community at large. I know Jen Hawley has worked really hard on creating the new website, and so it might be a nice place, maybe along with the Sandwich Board, to put it up so that people know that we are standing in support.
Tony, anybody else have any comments?
Well, I'd like to say that what's going on in Ukraine, it's horrible. Putin is a thug. We all know this. It's an invasion, but I'm more concerned, I guess, about our invasion in our own country. We've got over, who knows, over 2-point-something million so far that have come in over our border illegally, and that number is actually a very low number. It's more like 10 million. We have fentanyl coming over the border from China. We have people dying every day from this crap that's being brought over our border. We have child trafficking. Where's the outrage for our border? Where is the outrage for our country?
I think we want to stick with what we're.
Right, but I'm just making a comparison.
Okay.
I mean, where's the outrage for our country? I mean, everybody, and I'm not saying what's going on in Ukraine's good. It's not. And Ukraine, by the way, is the mecca center for, you know, child trafficking and money It's a corrupt nation. The people there are nice people. I'm not saying they're not, but it's, they've got some bad actors over there in that country. But anyway, with that being said, I would like to say, I am totally against what's going on in Ukraine. I agree with you, Carl, okay? But I would like to know where the outrage is for the invasion at our border.
Mike? Okay. So, any further discussion? Yes, yes, Sam.
I just don't think there's any comparison.
You're right.
The invasion that you're talking about is people. And what's happening in Ukraine is they are getting destroyed.
Yep.
If you watch television, you see the buildings, you see the, the whole infrastructure is being totally destroyed, whereas people who are trying to come here are just.
They're not coming in.
If there is drug trafficking, yes, they should certainly get on that, and I think they won't.
If you've been watching television, you know there's drug trafficking, you know there's child trafficking, you know that.
They are on it, and they are trying to do what they can.
They're doing nothing, that's the problem.
We're picking apples and oranges.
You're right. It's worse here than it is in Ukraine. The only, the only difference is there's not bombs dropping, so we got people dying from fentanyl. We have children being raped. Yeah, it's great.
Okay.
I, yep.
I'd just like to comment response briefly, Joe. This is not to be to the exclusion of anything else that someone like you might like to do in terms of voicing that for the town. This is, this is one of many terrible things going on in the world. What you're fighting about, I would invite you to prepare something for the town if you believe that that is reaching that level. This is not the exclusion of anything else.
I wish it wasn't reaching that level.
Martha?
I just wanted to know, just thinking about these, not the resolution, but some of these other requests that Shasbury folks have asked about, with creating a place to do a voluntary kind of donation as a symbolic gesture from the town of Shasbury, is there a mechanism that we have at this moment to do that? Or is there a fund that we could channel it to or put a button on our website or I don't know?
I would have to, yeah, when Carl mentioned that, I was thinking about that. I will research that and get back. I don't know what the mechanism would be to do that and how he would account for that or anything else, but I'll look into it. It's done in places. I just don't know how to go about doing it.
Because I think we could then share it out on.
Yeah, it could be a button on the webpage.
We all have our personal social media.
Yeah.
I have a Shasbury social media page that could then be put out.
I would, I would recommend that we confine it to money or, because I'm worried about if you start getting clothes and things, how are you going to logistically just getting it there, whereas money can then be funneled through a central collection and then eventually moved on to an approved fundraiser for the people of Ukraine.
Yeah, logistically, I would have to agree with that. I don't even know if we started getting a lot of things, I don't even know where we would put it.
Right, yeah.
And then it would be arranging trucking and everything else, but money is, is an easier thing to deal with.
There might be a way to do it through our municipal.
Yeah.
For, because I don't think Cameron Cash is necessarily such a good idea, but, but that allows both bank transfers and credit cards, and we could have a separate category for it. I would recommend keeping it off our books, but we would be able to do something like that.
Yeah.
So maybe we can work together.
Yeah, yeah, we'll figure it out.
Yeah, it would be as easy as just putting on a new choice on the website. Perfect.
Jim?
Well, we have a governor who took the lead and said, "The state of Vermont should go on record and do something." And he came up with the idea of each citizen, I guess there's 647,000 citizens in Vermont, he says, should donate a dollar. So what we're doing, we're going to allocate and fund $647,000, and the legislature's going to approve it if it hasn't done so already. And it's going to three different programs, which they've vetted up, where it's going to go for probably helping refugees, probably helping the people who are helping the refugees, and, in other words, it's just not going into a black hole.
Okay.
Or into some other charity that they use it somewhere else. It's going to go to Ukraine people, and the state of Vermont is taking the lead on that. I don't know if other states are going to join in, but those three charities, I think Doctors Without Borders is one of them. I can't remember the other.
Save the children, I think, was the name.
So if the town feels inclined to make, they could piggyback with the state of Vermont if they want to.
Okay.
That's a great suggestion.
What you were saying is that it wasn't PayPal, what, how was it? What was the system?
Our municipal on our website.
Municipal, okay.
But, yeah, we could certainly send it to a vetted organization that's, that's.
We have 3,500 citizens. I'm not saying that's the key number, but.
Okay.
You know, it's, this is an opportunity. I mean, we all belong to different communities, and they all aspire to do the right thing. Some are churches, synagogues, some are political parties. They don't always succeed instead of bringing us together. Sometimes they unite with the aid of others. But there's one community that we belong to.
Yep.
The global community. And that has to be, that's the community of human beings, humanity, and it must respond to injustice and oppression and brutality.
Okay.
And irrespective of what the other communities in your life are doing with people or for you, but.
Okay.
And this is a great chance for the town of Shasbury to recognize that and be part of this global response.
Yep. Thank you, Jim. Any other comments or discussions? All those in favor of the town of Shasbury adopting this resolution, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? So carried. Or is it 5-0-0?
4, 1-0.
You opposed? Okay. I'm sorry.
We have money we need to spend here on our own people.
Dave, you can take care of making sure this gets to the right.
Yeah, I'll do that, and I'll work on a cover letter for the letters to the embassy and our elected officials, because I'll get decent paper to put the resolution on, and then a cover letter from the board to send to legislators and the Ukrainian Embassy. And we can work with Jen for the posting on the webpage. I think the Sandwich Board is a little bit difficult for this larger message. Maybe we can cramp it down somehow, and then we'll work on the funding. Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Jim.
Melanie, Treasurers' Report?
I stay here, right?
As long as you speak up, it can be heard fine.
Okay. You've got the reserve, there we go.
Let me blow this up a little.
Absolutely nothing going on. You see that the only thing that's happened is a single $100 water payment came through. But I should say at the same time that the Water Utilities for Rirage program is up and running again with, I guess, a new funding of.
Yes.
Federal money this time, right?
Mm-hmm.
And we have had one, Shasbury resident has already applied and has been accepted. It took about four hours of my life that I'll never get back to figure out the website, but now I have it. I think I can do it.
Gosh.
So I urge all people who feel that they are unable to, to handle their, their water bills, this is a pretty generous program for people who are struggling because of COVID, or at least during the age of COVID. It can also be, you can also apply for delinquent taxes through this. I can't give any information about that. I don't even know whether Murd is taking this on yet. That would be second to ask him, but the program does apply to people unable to handle their property tax payments as well. So I'm hoping to see that credit number go up a bit, because that will be money that comes directly from this governmental agency, and it comes directly to us. It doesn't go to the person applying for the forgiveness. So that's just a little reminder about that. We've mentioned it a couple of times, but now I can assert that it is up and running and available to the town.
And the water did get to inquiries today, and we're going to be going around to our list and distributing the information. Because it is a great time to just set yourself back to zero here, and it's not going to last forever, so.
Are you planning to do that door to door?
Yeah, that was going to be door to door next week.
Okay.
We're going to go to the, to the biggest part of the list and just let them know, because it's too important to go by. I mean, you can really help yourself by taking advantage of this program right now, so.
Yeah, I think we should talk to, did you discuss it with Murd and all? There've been other things because of the tax sale, but.
The tax sale, I did mention it to Murd when he was in the office last week. I don't know what the status of his whole list is. I mean, he, we'll have to discuss it with him, because he has payment arrangements with a lot of people. I don't know.
Yeah.
But if you're out there and you're listening and you do have delinquent taxes, this program covers that, too. Go to our webpage, go to the link, and talk to the people in the state and.
Yeah, I mean, the main, main thing now is just to get the word out. So we have been talking about ways to contact the people with, with any kind of delinquency. So just want to keep that in order. Would it be okay to put it out through my Shasbury Facebook page, just the information and to get feedbacks?
It's, it's, yeah, it's a state program.
All right.
Anyway, you can get it out, get it out, yeah.
Just an informational flyer, I can get you a PDF of it. Perfect, because my posts are reaching 800 people in this general community. Could you email me, and I'll send it out? I will do that, Melanie, thank you. Want to look at the cash flow? This is one of those mid-month reports, it doesn't tell you all that much. You can see that Murd has been taking in a lot of delinquent taxes. I think that's connected to the tax sale. The tax sales have a tendency to get people's attention, so he's been taking in a bit more. And I think that he hadn't been out there collecting because of preparing for the tax sale. You can see the checks written in March, that's, you approved that last time. That's an alarming number, but that's all one, mostly one check. That's the, that famous Parrot Eaters check that we keep talking about. I'm going to scroll down, there's really not much else. That's our real cash. This is coming into the time of, actually, no, there's, there's some money due to that from the reserve account, so we have more cash in the bank than that really. I'll do those transfers, and we'll get a better handle on it for next month. This is the time of year when I start keeping a close watch on the cash flow, because that's got to get us through the end of June. After that, we'll probably need to get a line of credit in anticipation of taxes in July or August, as we have in past years, although not last year.
Great.
And then, I'm not showing the budget projection now, because this is a mid-month report, but I'll show you that next time. Any questions about any of this?
The Lister's reappraisal, that's for, whenever it becomes necessary.
Yes, that's right.
To have a timeline reappraisal.
We have, there's a Lister's reappraisal CD, and there's also a.
Oh, there's more than that?
There's, if you, can you go back to the reserve?
Yep.
We, if you remember, we started having so much money in that, look at the line 290 there, the second one under 290.
Yeah, okay.
There's, see, there's another $80,000 in there. We took, I think, a couple hundred thousand out of that, because this earns practically no interest, and we put it in a CD a few years ago, so at least that's earning a little bit more. We never know exactly when we're going to need it.
Yep.
And there might be, there might be some way to get a little bit more, but we don't want to be invested in that money, so.
Because you may need it.
Well, yeah, we get payments from the state every year to put into this.
Yeah, but the point is, you don't want to invest in something that's.
Oh, no, yeah.
We need to be liquid.
Yes.
So we're not, we're not earning very much, but at least it's, it's a CD, it's making more than in just this year.
Yep, okay.
Anything else? Okay.
Thank you, Melanie. Okay.
So.
DPW report?
DPW report, it's mud season, although you wouldn't know it by some of our roads, but they're in pretty good shape, they're doing well. And as everyone knows, that's really what the work is at this time of year. It's going around fixing the spots, grading. They're grading along East Road today, and they'll just continue that in the normal process of putting stone down to fix the soft spots, but even today, when I was on East Road, there were just a few soft spots and a few potholes. The roads are holding up very well, certainly way, way better than they had been in the recent past, so I think altogether, they've done a great job on the roads. The projects coming up will be Buck Hill Road, trees brushed, ditching the entire road. But even today, when I was on East Road, there were just a few soft spots and a few potholes. The roads are holding up very well, certainly way, way better than they had been in the recent past. So I think altogether, they've done a great job on the roads. The projects coming up will be Buck Hill Road, trees brush, ditching the entire road. There's six culverts to replace this season. We have a grant to repave it, and that doesn't need to be finished until the end of next year. For budgeting reasons, we think we're going to put it off this year so that we take advantage of next year when we have more money. In June of this year, we have a Better Roads Grant that we already have in place. There's a culvert way up at the end of Shasbury Hollow that we've been looking at for like five, six years that we're going to replace with that grant this year. Weaver was, actually awarded that contract back in the fall of '21, but things keep getting backed up with different projects. The big projects that will be coming up that we're looking at is to pave about 2,700 feet on East Road, and that's the last section going towards 7A, starting just south of Reservoir Road going up to Route 7. The overpass, it's really, that's the last part that we haven't paved on that road, and it's pretty rough in spots. All Birch Hill, which is 2,600 feet. The entranceway of all Hidden Valley, which is 2,100 feet. Reclaim and pave, and reclamation is different, it's going to grind up the road, and then repave Twitchell Hill, the section from Daniels to Eric, because anyone drives there, that's pretty bumpy, too. It's probably the second worst in town. We just got the numbers from Peckham, so we have to crunch them out and see what it is. Hopefully, it's not up too high this year, given the price of oil, which is the main component of it. The other thing we're doing is we're going to hire an engineering firm, probably, I forget their acronym now, but we're going to do some bore holes on White Creek Road. White Creek is literally slipping off, and we've paved part of it to flatten it, but it's depressing again, and the more pavement you put on, it just depresses it more. And this has been a project that's been kind of out there. So we're going to do the bore holes and then get it to the state, and we're going to have to design a fix. Hopefully, they'll design a fix, and we're going to have to hire engineers to design a fix, and then we're going to have to get a big structures grant because I think the whole thing is going to have to be shored up all along there. I mean, we had a, we had a big fix where, did the same thing at Brownells about eight years ago, seven years ago, and we were able to fix that with basically what's called giant burrito, but I don't think that's going to work up on, especially on the bends, because you have outward pressure from the heavy trucks on it. Filling in the dips makes the road heavier, which makes the whole thing push more, so it's kind of a catch 22 there.
So these Class 3 road paving things, is that using ARPA money, or is that using grant money, or what is it?
Well, that'll hopefully be structures money for White Creek. The other.
I'm talking about Class 3s.
Oh, Class 3s, the other ones.
You're talking about three Class 3s.
Yeah, we're going to look at the price, and then we're going to see which direction we're going to be asking for that. We might be asking ARPA money for, because road construction is allowed in this now, along with, like everything I just mentioned is all allowed with ARPA now. And some of these projects are getting fairly great need of, so it's, I have to see the prices first. This is what we're thinking of, because we do have a Class 3 road fund. So there's 100,000 in that with between paving and that, so we can generate about 175,000 for fiscal '23 for paving. How far that'll get on some of these, because like, East Road will not be a reclamation job, probably not Birch Hill or Hidden Valley, there'll be shim coats. So that's a lot cheaper than grinding it up. We'll just have to see what the price comes out to be. We priced all this a couple of years ago, but pre-COVID, and everything is completely different now. And the other thing we had was the town road and bridge standards, which I sent around over the weekend. I'll pass this along because everybody has to sign this, it's approved. The town road and bridge standards, we sign every year. To get the maximum funding, especially in a disaster, you have to be adhering to all the state rules on how you build your roads and how you maintain them, so.
So by accept, by making a motion, we just accept their standards?
You just accept it.
We will comply with their standards.
You will comply with them, yes.
So I need a motion that we will comply with the state's standards, and by signing this, we all agree to that. Towne, Martha?
Second.
Second, by Tony. Any discussion?
What's the state standard?
Well, it's very complicated, but I don't know.
I sent it around the, over the weekend. It's quite, it's these four pages, but it actually encompasses what's all called the Orange Book. It's how to construct roads in the state. And we follow it, we do this every year. It's just to prevent towns from, you know, we'll put a half inch of gravel on this road instead of the, you know, nine inches like it's supposed to be. And what we've been striving to do, especially since we got Mike here, is to follow these standards exactly so that they just, they work better. It's kind of as simple as that. They work better if you follow them. So the state wants you to sign it for grant purposes, and then if you get into disasters, you're also going to show that you built the road the way it was supposed to be, so.
So it was done to their standard?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So I have a motion and a second. Any more discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, still carried, 500. So the.
Thank you.
At our last meeting, we talked about the liaison list whereby a member of the select board is like the liaison to different departments within the town and that sort of stuff. We pretty much let Martha pick what she wanted, never provided the rest of them up. She's indicated the one she's wanted. We've kind of changed her, David has changed a few of them around. Other than that, there's no other discussion. I don't know, those we have to vote on, or this is just a.
It's just in front of, if all the board understands, I did regroup some of them to try and get everybody together. Tony has a lot of the state things and the law enforcement. I grouped everything with zoning and emergency management over with Martha.
Yeah, and the, a representative to the rescue squad.
Yeah, and the representative of the rescue squad.
Tony, was that what, we'd like you to do with that, okay?
Yeah.
So you want, you're going to join the board?
Apparently, I don't know yet until I have some information about it and where I'm supposed to go and where I'm supposed to go.
I'll give you, I'll send you Brian Pease.
Okay, information, okay, and then I can reach out. And if there is a way to get other.
Yeah, now, if we settle on this, I'll get you the rest of it.
Yeah, information on how to reach out to these other folks.
She's not a voting member of that board, is she, Tony?
Yeah.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
Okay, interesting. I thought it was just a.
No.
We have, we have a spot on their board.
Yep.
Yeah.
When we put them in a budget line, we made them give us a spot.
And I did also take on BCRC because I know Ken had been doing that, so I will reach out to, I guess, Jim Sullivan is the one I need to reach out to on that one.
I moved Water, which was a hangover from Ken Harrington, to Art because we're pretty deep into, we're pretty deep into Water now.
Yes, I had some fascinating reading between roads and water this weekend. I was like, my goodness. Catching up here.
Okay. This is just a, we're just putting this out to the public, but these are some possibilities for ARPA money.
Yeah.
Again, we want feedback from the public, but.
Yeah, I mean, I just listed these as things that, kind of like on my mind and other people we've brought up, we do want public input, and we've been saying this, and we're going to keep saying it, but on the other hand, clock's ticking for some of this that I'm going to have to get bids out, too, because '26 sounds like a long time off, but with some of these projects, it's going to be crunch time. There's such a shortage of contractors and everything else around here. So I don't know, Art, if you want to go through these or.
Yeah, the first is an economic development study and sewer study. Let's combine those two together because one can't be done without the other, okay? I really would like a committee to start looking at that, but before they go, and I think what they've got to do is, they would be, hire a professional person that comes in, does an economic development overview of all that sort of stuff, and then goes from there. But I would ask you, before that committee goes forward with that, that you look at what we did, the exact same thing about 20 years ago.
Do you mean the 2006 wastewater study?
Yes, but there was a whole economic development part of that.
On top of it.
There was two things. There was an economic development study, and then we hired somebody to do the wastewater because one of the recommendations of the economic development was that there would be a sewer thing.
Sure, okay.
I'd like you to take a look at, really study that, both of them, and if you think that the, that the dynamics of Shasbury has changed that much than Shasp since then, then certainly go ahead. But I don't, I really want you to look at, that was a very professional study.
Yeah, I delved into the 2006 wastewater thing intensely. I read the entire report, I did a report on it.
And before that, and what was the other, the future of Shasbury, was that?
I believe it was called The Future of Shasbury, I think I have, I think I have that.
But I would love to read it.
Yeah.
That is, that, that was the preliminary thing before the sewer.
Before that came, okay, which makes sense.
All right, okay. Would you be willing to?
Yeah, so what, what happens, I don't know what that means, making a committee. Is that a committee, my, I'm just a select board member, and then it's a committee?
I think.
Community members, or?
I think we'll just put out a thing, anybody that's interested in the, now, there is an economic development committee that was, that has not done anything. I was the chairman, and.
And I guess I'm the liaison for that now, too.
Yes.
But I, I don't feel that I should be the chairman on, now, because I'm the chairman here. Phyllis Poreo has moved out of town and was up by us. Send her, send her Morse.
Send her.
Send her, she might be interested in doing it again, I don't know.
So you could, you could actually form it just using the economic development committee as the base and just.
Or other folks that just.
Well, yeah, I mean, it was actually, the committee's pretty much wide open, so you could get people on it, yeah.
That's great, I got, I got some people. Great. And so what's the timeframe that we're looking at? Because I had thought that, Art, you had said you were going to kind of try to bring it to the people in 2023. We're kind of talking about it, at least I think that at some meeting you had previously kind of thought that that was when we were going to kind of start talking with the public and getting public comments.
I don't remember 2023, but we certainly want, we want public input on all of this stuff.
Yeah.
And as he mentioned, the sooner we decide on a list and prioritization, the sooner we can get contracts signed and that sort of stuff.
Yeah, because if we're looking at, like, the economic development and sewer feasibility combined, I think what you're looking at there is hiring professionals to do.
Sure.
A fear not, not to like build sewer system, because that would be so much money, this wouldn't even make a dent in it. But, so that, I mean, we need to move on to some aspects, especially construction aspects, but something like that, I mean, we have 1.1 million, so we can kind of spread this around. But it's the bigger things, like the next one on the agenda, like the Coal Hall thing that, and the water main, those are the ones that we have to move forward without using up every penny of it.
I want to mention that when we did the sewer study.
Yeah.
The state loaned us $35,000 to pay for the person in the company that did the evaluation of what it would cost to put in a sewer system. We still owe the state for that. The agreement was that at any time that we did put in a system and we bonded money, we would then pay the state the $35,000 back.
Really?
$35,000.
Wow.
On the hook, all right.
We're on the hook for $35,000. So I don't think that that's necessary to be done again.
Sure.
I think what you've got to look at is the economic development.
Right, the piece of it, yep, that makes, that makes a lot of sense.
There are also probably grants out there that would help us fund any kind of study like that.
And I've been looking at, I've been looking at grants.
So made out after you're up in one.
Yeah.
And the BCRC did a beautiful presentation, actually, on this topic.
Yeah.
Fairly recently, within the last six months that I attended.
Okay. Coal Hall accessibility, we've talked a lot about this. All we have is a man left that is not.
Really getting past its useful life, almost.
That is the fire exit, and that is not at all.
The steps have to be fixed, yeah, that's for sure. But the big thing, the big thing is, we have preliminary design of a new, the thing on the side here, the staircase and all this is done, it's past its life. So we have preliminary designs for an elevator. It would actually bump out, second floor would be right through those doors, that's where it would be. It would be a small walkway to cover the entrance to the downstairs, to the elevator shaft. It would be a whole new entrance for downstairs and here. The construction of the elevator itself is about $300,000, this little addition. The rest that was in the original plan, we could fund through other sources, but this is.
So it's just the elevator?
It's the elevator shaft. It's fairly substantial. Where those cones are outside, that would be the exterior of it, that's how far out it would go. It'd be like a glass walkway on the second floor to the elevator shaft and of the fire exit, which has, it has to have a staircase on it, too. So it would be that, then the ramp coming in downstairs really has to be lowered a little bit, and it would be expanded with, you know, it would change the whole side of the building, while preserving, by having the elevator pumped out and the glass, you can have preserve a lot of the historical aspects of the building, because you would see it, wouldn't be like this brick thing attached to the side of the building.
Right, right. But you had said that it's the elevator part that is, you're thinking about doing that, but the other stuff is all funded?
The other stuff, yep, the steps, we, we're going to get to that later on, because some of the side need to start this year with, with funding we'll get from other sources.
So it's really the elevator?
It's really the, ARPA funds, it's really, because the only option is, we bond it for like 20 years, it'd be about 18,000 a year bonded out, or we use this pile of cash that's free. And like I said, all the thinking changed when they changed the rules, and we can spend it everywhere. Originally, it was just going to go to the pipeline, because that's the only thing we could use it for, but to make this huge and need to change the building with basically a gift from the federal government is kind of enticing to do, because we're going to get into other, other things down the road, I'm sure. But this is the last piece. Structurally, this building was only inspected a few years ago. The floors were reinforced as the attic was back in 2009, I think it was, all I-beams up here now. You know, we're not going anywhere, and this is like the last step. This has been around forever. It's, that and that, the two main things for the second floor are at the end of their life, and it's just time to do something.
This is the command center for.
It's Emergency Operations Center for the town, which isn't a big production, but it also needs to be accessible, and it's here instead of the firehouse, because in an emergency, they're going to have lots of people there. It's also the evacuation point for the school, so it's a lot easier here because most of EOCs deal with what's dealt with, and this building is not operations, it's finance, it's finding equipment. Joe calls up and says, I need something, we have to get a way to pay for it and move it and everything else for him. So it's a place for people to gather perfectly in this room to discuss anything that was going on. And it, you know, we need better ADA access to this building.
Certainly.
And there's supplemental grants that can go on that to flesh that up, but like the disability grant for the state accessibility grant, excuse me, is, my max is at like 75,000.
Yeah, I've been looking into other ways to fund that.
75,000 doesn't get you much of an elevator, so. You know, 75,000 doesn't get you much of an elevator, so it'd be nice to get, and I think if we went ahead with this whole plan, we just might get the whole 75, but, which would be very helpful.
Right.
But that's why we keep saying about, we need to discuss moving this along, because if we have to go for bond, that is already pretty much shot for next year, because we would have to have all the paperwork done in a couple of months, and from doing the garage, it takes a while, because you have to get a separate attorney, it's a whole So, yeah, I just want to get the conversation going. If people think that's a good idea, let us know as a use of the funds, so that we can start moving in that direction, or if they don't think it's a good idea, or if they would rather us bond it. The only thing for sure is, something has to give here. That has to go, and it has to be replaced. And I really think this is discouragement for people with disabilities to come in this building.
And is that what you consider a limited use, like a...
No, that's not a Lula either, that's just a man lift, that's...
Okay, so that's one step down from a Lula.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
A Lula is exactly like an elevator, except it has one entrance. The reason we can't have one in a municipal building...
That's what I was going to ask as much for.
Is because you can't turn a wheelchair around in a Lula.
Okay.
And so for a municipal building, they won't let you have it, because a Lula is significantly cheaper.
Significantly cheaper. I've been doing some research on it, okay.
Significantly, and in dealing with Goldstone, who we've been working on this sporadically, we haven't spent a lot of time or money on it, but we do have, basically, in his research, he found out municipal buildings can't have Lulas. So...
That one's out.
Yeah, that one's out.
My research is out on that, okay.
Yeah, that's why, you know, getting like the grant, the accessibility grant would be good, but, you know, it's kind of like, you start this stuff now, and we're talking about 2025 construction. If we get the grants, we get however we want to fund this, so it's, it's, just remember that clock's ticking, and this stuff takes time to get placed.
How long does that, this money last?
To 2026.
Okay.
So it seems like a long way off.
It's not that far away.
It's not that far away in the timeline, just for those who are all here for the garage. Even when we got the bond vote, it took a long time before that thing was done. And we were, you know, the money has to be spent by that last date, so it's not that far away, yeah.
I do have some other research that I will share with you that I've been doing about grants, or elevators in particular, because I've been, I've been out there on the internet searching.
All right. Of course, the big one is the water main replacement.
Yep.
We have an estimate of just about a million dollars to do it.
1.1 million to build, and we have 1.1 million in ARPA money.
But it only serves...
It only serves 320 customers in this end of town.
So it's the, basically, the light district, the fire and light?
And only parts of it.
Oh, not even the whole part, okay.
Oh goodness, no, there's three, three phases to do it all. And this is just only phase one.
This is phase one.
And it's a million dollars. And if inflation keeps up with us, the next two are going to be more than that.
Yeah.
This, this is coming from the main, down, right down Route 7, and one of the reasons that we've got to do this as the first one is because Route 7, within the next couple of years, is going to be completely redone, and we don't want to be giving up brand-new blacktop.
That makes a lot of sense, okay.
Yeah, so it's, it's just, and, and this answer kind of follows on the previous question. I mean, do we want to spend money for here, which benefits the entire town, because the entire town uses this, or do we subsidize the water system with the ARPA money? See, they're all, they all play in with each other, and even the...
It's a tangled mess.
Yeah, even the next one, because we now can do road projects that also benefit a wider number of people in town. So it's, if people have ideas, please share them with the board and us, because we need feedback to, to make a decision here.
So what, what were some of the culverts you were, you were thinking of?
I don't have that exact list yet.
Okay.
But, you know, just, the prime example is what we just did up in the Hollow. It took two years of our class, Class 3 road fund, that's $200,000, 175,000 grant, part of our other culvert fund, part of the gravel budget, and part of whatever, the guardrail budget, I mean, you know, it took up over $400,000 to build one thing. That's why, you know, again, 1.1 sounds like a lot until you start spending it, and it, one little bridge on Shasbury Hollow, a culvert, it's not even a bridge, was close to $400,000. That's, that's why decisions have to be made, because we're going to have to start looking at this carefully. In a lot of other towns, Bennington is doing all kinds of things with theirs, and they're not doing a large project. I think we're basically talking about everything kind of in the large scale.
Yeah.
Each one consuming a third or more of our total money, so, and maybe that's the way to do it. A third for coal, a third for the water, and a third for highway and money for a development You know, but ideas are what we need, and feedback is what we need.
Speaking of that, one of the things that I've been thinking about, there is a method through the Harwood Institute, which is a very reputable organization, I just made two copies of it. And this is something that had been done both in the town of Arlington and also in North Bennington, and basically getting shareholders together and stakeholders in the community, nonprofits, businesses, just the general public to talk about things, and to kind of talk about those three big questions to kind of steer kind of where we're thinking Shasbury maybe is going, especially with this kind of funny going. It received enormous feedback from both towns when they had gone through this process, and I think it's very much focused how they are developing their towns and all of the new things that are happening. And so I think that it may be something that is worth, especially as we're trying to do this, and I don't know, didn't know the timeframe of kind of what, how we're getting kind of public input in this, but it is a very valid method. I've used it in my school system when I've worked in schools, I've used it in medical systems. It's a very good way to kind of get a large group of shareholders and stakeholders at the table, talking about things, and so...
Is this a survey you send out?
Yeah, so I know more about North Benningtons than I do about Arlington, just because I have more folks that I know in North Bennington. They sent it out in multiple ways. They sent it out via email, they sent it out in a mailer, they sent it out by a Facebook. They basically kind of covered all of their things, and they did it in two steps. So the first step was kind of a pre-planning with all of the major businesses in the community and nonprofits and things like that, and so they kind of underwent that process. And then they opened it up to kind of the greater community, and obviously there was a lot more, but then they kind of shifted together, kind of their ideas of what they wanted to see, so...
So when this information comes back, is there somebody that, is there, is there a professional group that analyzes it, or do you, as the receiver of the information, try to handle this?
I think that in the North Bennington thing, there was kind of a committee that synthesized the information coming back, and I think that was partly to kind of save money, and there were folks on there that kind of knew how to take data together and piece it together. But I don't know, you know, it was just an idea of things, especially because I feel like, at least from what I am getting from community members, is not these things for the ARPA money, and I just want to make sure that we are being really inclusive about how we're talking about it, or if these are the priorities that we really truly need for Shasbury, that we are marketing and branding this in a way that makes it feel like it's inclusive, because it's not feeling inclusive.
What have you heard? Because I've heard nothing from anyone.
Yeah, well, so I think a lot of folks are thinking more about, I think, more micro-level projects as opposed to macro-level projects. So, you know, I've heard a lot of folks talking about issues of kind of things like Howard Park, and how do we make that better? How do we make our green and our town look nicer, because the shine has kind of come off of Shasbury kind of proper here? And kind of other projects that are much, much smaller in scale. I've had folks come to me about climate solution issues, and if we need to be reforesting things and making edible forests, and I've had somebody come to me, talking to me about the need to think about sustainable food pathways here in the area, and how do we get more local food to people that need it here, and whether that's, you know, community gardens and things like that. So I think there's a bit of a disconnect, and, and that's what I'm getting, and obviously this is a small part of the community that's, you know, reaching out and talking to me about these issues, but I think that it's worth at least having people come forward to have this conversation.
Yeah, you know, there's no one on Zoom, and there's no one here. So that's kind of what we're saying, is come say something.
So I think that there's a need to kind of, I think, brand market, get people back in. I mean, obviously, there was a lot more people here today than we normally have for the Ukraine resolution, so I think that if we can get it out... We the People is a really an amazing group of people, that's about 100 people in Shasbury, and they have networks out from that 100, and are fairly good at kind of mobilizing people if we were to, to then bring something like this Harwood Institute idea.
I think we want to be careful, though. We already have a REIT committee that has a huge budget, that has discretion on how they send something.
Yeah, I, I've heard this on Howard Park, and I really don't understand what they're talking about. So I'm looking forward to the REIT committee meeting, because we have tens of thousands of dollars slated for projects there, and they know that, so I'm confused.
Yes, yeah.
And so communication, I think that that's really where I'm, I'm thinking that we're breaking down the most, is with communication between different segments of population, maybe.
If you wait a few minutes, we're going to be talking about greenery around here, too.
Yep, sure, yep.
Didn't we do a survey?
Oh, we tried two surveys for the parks and got like eight responses.
Right, we've done, so we've got surveys.
Yeah, no, I mean, this Harwood thing, because I know they did it up in Arlington, and, you know, that's, that's fine to, to reach out and get things. I mean, we do, we do need some feedback. I mean, we certainly do. Yeah, I mean, every idea should be coming, should come in and be vetted, and see which way we want to go. You know, honestly, my feeling is kind of, you know, you have big-ticket items here, and either you bond them out, or you use this money that's coming in. It's, it makes no difference to me, but...
And that's, you know, that's been our focus as a board.
Right.
It's the macro.
Right, and, and that is a beautiful thing, and I appreciate that completely, thinking about the numbers of things. But I, I do think, I feel like there's disconnect in things.
I think in your committee, incorporate that.
Right, for talking about.
Yeah. And Chris Williams, and talk to Chris Williams.
Yes, I work with him, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah. It would be interesting to do something like Harwood and find out what people think.
I mean, I am certainly willing to, you know, do the kind of electronic portion of it, and, and, you know, send it out via the Facebook method and things.
Did Jim Baker did this in Arlington?
Something similar. I'm not sure if it was quite the Harwood, but...
Because Jim is good at that.
He's, yes, and I, I have not gotten, yeah, I haven't gotten to speak with him yet, because I'm very curious about things. And Jenny in the McCullough Library were a big part of why this happened in North Bennington. And, and so she's been showing a little bit of the details with that, but I'm happy to send that out to, to Facebook if you are, the board is willing to allow me that leeway to, to just see what people are saying, and maybe I could bring it back to you as to...
Okay, so, tell me again what you'd like to do.
So I'd like to send out those three questions to, to Shasbury on kind of social media.
You'll be mailing it or anything else like that?
Well, I don't know if there's even an option.
Mailing is...
I know that's harder to do.
Well, it's, it's expensive, too.
Yeah, not as...
But, I mean, between the webpage, emails, Facebook groups, Funquote forum, you could certainly get it out there for those who are interested in responding.
I think that we'd get some response to that. I'm sure that there's a segment of people...
But you're also getting the people that have internet.
Right, and so I think the segment of population that you wouldn't hear from necessarily might be folks of a older generation that maybe are not...
Or Shasbury Hollow.
Or folks that, yes, don't have internet access. So I, if we're doing it, I mean...
It wouldn't be much, because we actually, I don't know if that's allowed funding.
We could do a presorted mail, I can imagine that would be about 15 cents of mailing after you leave the mail.
Yeah, you get a thing, yeah. Well, we could look into that.
And certainly I could put something together, a mock-up, and then I could bring it back at the next meeting to, to let you guys take a look before we send it out into the world.
Okay, so, as you were kind of saying, putting the shine back in Shasbury, that, that's really the next portion that we're talking about, okay?
Yeah, just to start out, for things in '23, and this also goes back to the elevator shaft, and the original plans were to do this all at once, and that's not going to happen until we make some decisions. So we can't wait any longer. I'm going to put out a bid to paint the steeple here, and just to do a quick coat on this staircase, because it looks really cruddy, before we tear it down. But the steeple is a whole project, so we're going to put a bid out for that. I'm expecting that to be quite expensive.
Flashing is missing.
Yeah, flashing, yeah, that's under the roofing. It's time to do the slate maintenance and repair. During that windstorm, a big piece of flashing blew off. I had to back up like 200 yards to see where it came from, but it was way up on the steeple, so we're going to have to have them come in and fix that. Yeah, the, the front part in the rear here, part of the whole project was the green space all around Coal Hall. We can't get into the whole thing, because it has to be part of a bigger plan of the Veterans Park out front, because I wanted to expand that, wanted to move the monument, put it on this side, so it faces outward here. But all that has to really be on hold until we know where we're going with the construction for the main parts. So I'm, I'm reminiscing back to the removal of the garage pad over there, which we'll take that out, and we'll just do plantings over there, mostly grass, because we'll have 20, from the cones, I'm going to permanently leave this backed off and green out to where the cones are now. It'll be 60 feet to the next green space along the eastern border there, which will run along the back. In the back here, we have a different issue. We're going to close that off, it's always been planned that we closed off. We're just planting grass back there, but we're also going to solicit from three contractors around here for plantings of bushes or trees, what they think of as appropriate to screen off this property. We went to clean it a couple of years ago, and they got a little too energetic and cut down...
Well, there used to be a salt shed there.
Yeah, there used to be a salt shed, which we knocked down, and then I asked them to clean it, because there were some hangers in the stuff, and they went and they cut it down, a lot of her stuff, too. So we kind of have to like re-green to screen off her property, which we promised her we would do, because we did go too far. But anyway, we were always going to do that to begin with, so I'm going to do that this year to get that greened off. I'm going to bowl that from the monument to narrow the entrance here, so it'll look nicer, but you can't curb it, because we can't do anything permanent like that, so I might just have bumpers there to keep people from driving on it. Because you can't go, well, you can't go too far, because until we decide what we're doing with this, we can't spend the real money on curbing and everything else to make it come out correctly. And then, of course, we get into the bigger question of the windows, which is another whole mess. I think I mentioned to you that the windows are 70,000 apiece, the non-historically correct windows are 16,000 apiece, and, yeah, so it's, no matter how you slice that one, it's a lot of money. And we are going to have an energy survey done here. There's a bill in the House that's undoubtedly going to pass that will have the towns, provide funding for the towns, to have energy surveys of all their buildings, and will fund, at the end of that, will fund replacement of heating systems to greener and more efficient heating systems. And our boiler has been around a long time, so I was approached by a, a energy group here that's joined with North Bennington somehow, and, you know, I kind of said, well, hold on, I'm not going to hire someone to look at this when the state's going to do it for free when this bill passes. And then they'll do exactly the survey that they're going to want, to then I can turn around and hand it to the people who will fund me for a new boiler system here, or not a boiler, whatever it turns out to be. So I think it's a pretty good idea. But that's, we're kind of limited, because the plan is actually a lot nicer if we can do the whole thing, but we still don't know what parts we can fund, because if we can't do the whole thing, but we still don't know what parts we can fund because if we can't put in the elevator, I'm not quite sure what we're going to do with this thing. It has to go, so.
So that's really the sticky weight right now.
Yeah, that's, that's it.
The elevator is the sticky picket.
Yeah, because everything, everything is based off that. I mean, if we can't do that, the real shame would be, the easiest option is doing something with the front to make this accessible, which historic preservation would go through the roof because I'd really have to alter it and nobody wants to do that. As it is, I have to change these steps because they're not bright and has to have railings. So I'm going to try and address that this year too, but that has to be done at low expense. It's kind of like a safety issue, so we have to address it, but I'd like to keep it down as much because when we get approval one way or the other, either bonding or using ARPA money, the whole plan, it all hasn't blended together where it's not going to make out. But we've delayed and delayed some things. We moved in the pad, the steeple, starting some painting around here, green spacing the back, green spacing as much as we can out here while keeping the parking lot, which wouldn't be in its final design either, so you can't do too much out there. Because everything you move cascades onto something else. So that's the general idea for, for this year. Also a security and smoke detection system, and we'll just see what the prices of that are. We should have a smoke detection system at minimum in here and it's just something we're exempt and it just doesn't get done, but we should, we should have it. And I'm hoping to pull it together, a lot of the funding from that from different, different things we have. Well, we have 18,000, close to 19,000 in the Cole Hall fund alone, which always isn't that much. The steeple is going to chew up a lot of money because, you know, you're going to have to man lift up there or do something else, I don't know. But we'll come up with the rest and there's also money in the Hawkins Fund. The Hawkins Fund had a very, very, very good year a couple of years ago, so there's money to be had in that too. The GW Hawkins Fund is a select board fund that's held by the trustees, so it made a lot of money last year. And we're getting to spending $35,000 of that in a few minutes at the transfer station, so.
So by consensus, we would like Dave to get bids for, for the old garage pad?
Yep, painting the steeple.
Painting the steeple and the side deck and landscaping.
And the slate roof maintenance.
And the slate roof maintenance. Four things?
And the repair upgrade for the front steps.
Which includes the railways.
Yeah, then we, yeah, it really needs to have railings. Yeah, so those five things. And these will just be bids because they're all going to come out less than the $10,000, hopefully. The only thing that could pop up over is the steeple, but I won't know that until. I mean, the steeple is going to be expensive, I don't know how much, but.
What's your comment about the $10,000?
Well, the threshold to just go out and solicit for three people is $10,000, so I'm going to solicit for three people and hopefully the painting will come in under that. And the last time we did a paint estimate was nearly $75,000. Yeah, and that included the windows up because I don't know frankly who would want to paint all these windows if we drive here.
Yeah, that seems like a challenge.
All right, so I'll go ahead and do that. And let's see. I sent around, if you want me to go on with the town ordinances?
Yes, please.
I sent around a few things over the weekend for the, I just made a list so everyone would have the town ordinances and policies and where we are. The current, the top grouping is current 31022, which all have been reviewed and they're the newer ones more or less, and we're just, those are going to stay in place the way they are. The second grouping is what is on the review and of course the traffic and parking, which is also on the review. And we'll go through most of these pretty quickly. Tonight, that's just really for your reference, so you all know what's, what's in there. The speed zone ordinance I sent around, I trimmed off a lot of this, there's, were pages and pages, but each page was nullifying the previous page and then we come to a stop with the last amendment in 1995, which adjusted some of these speed limits. So in the speed ordinance I put around, it lists a certain group of roads that'll be 25 miles an hour and then the rest of the town would be, Myers Road would be 30 miles per hour because it is now, not sure why, but it is. And then the rest of the town would be 35 miles an hour. It's just three speeds, three standard speeds for town. I can't see on many of our rural roads making any less than 35. 25 is almost all right here. And like I said, Myers Road, for some reason, they changed to 30 miles an hour. Don't really know what that's about and we could go either way with that. I'm going to post this on the webpage as proposed speed ordinance so people can look at it and give feedback if they think one road should be, you know, statutory, the 35 is basically what you want on all the rural roads. You certainly don't want anything more than that. And like I said, the 25s are all right here, basically, and you certainly don't want anybody going more than 25 on Cleveland or Church or anything like that, so, you know. Well, Joe wants to do 50, I can see him.
Not me, no. We've got guys on Crotrock that's doing Mach 5. I mean, we've got guys in cars playing Speed Racer all the time. I complain about it. I even talked to the sheriff sitting down by Stanley Tools one day about it.
That was all right.
Yeah, come on up and check it out. Oh, yeah, well, nobody does it. I even offered to, hey, come sit in my driveway, you can use my driveway. Witness it yourself, sit in my house, have a copy and watch them go by. I mean, this is crazy, but I gave up on it. I'm not talking about it anymore.
Yeah.
Because nothing's happened. I've been, what, for how many years I've talked about it?
Yeah, and we have had the sheriffs go there and, oh, she had a speed study I did there with you.
Till somebody gets hit, then, then they'll do something, you know?
Yeah.
I live on Eric Green, it's similar, it's a straight shot and some people, they use it as a drag strip.
Yeah.
Yeah. Somebody ends up dead, then they'll finally do something when it's too late. Okay, so those are just going to be posted for public comments?
Yeah, I think people should just look at it and I think keeping it as simple as possible and not having a wide variety, because pages like this one, which I just included so you could see what some of the, it goes, went on and on and there's portions that are in other parts, it's, it's kind of all over the place, so this just cleans it up. It's here and that's it. It's, it's three speeds, we can even get rid of Myers if you want and just make it two speeds.
Is there any reason why Myers couldn't be 35?
No, I, you know, I don't know why it's 30, I don't know how they picked 30.
Except you could hardly go more than that.
Did that happen for a reason? I want to say that that happened maybe 10 years ago.
I mean, if you know because.
There was a whole situation because it was going to get paved and then people got pretty upset.
You've got a good memory, that's right.
Oh, okay.
They, starting at off from Route 67A, they really widened that up.
Yeah.
Because it was really narrow and I think, I think that's when they paved the first part of it up where you have to coming off.
Yeah, coming up the grade, yeah.
But they continued on all up through and they really widened it out. And I can remember one particular family that lives over on the corner of where Eric and Myers come together was really concerned that people are going to go flying through there and I guess the town fathers just said, well, why don't we just cut it down to 30 then? But I, that's all, that's no whiter or no, no better than any other road around here.
No, actually it has more bends on it than a lot of other roads.
Yeah, I mean, if, if you wanted to keep it 30, it's because of the sharp corner.
Right near Liz Titus.
Liz Titus, but still, that's, that's not going to, five miles an hour is not going to make any difference on.
No, and that'd be more of an advisory sign by, by the bends to slow down.
I think if we increase it to 35 and, and make sure there's an advisory sign. And now there's a stop sign where Eric.
Yeah, we have the stop sign there and I had a stop sign, advance, advance, stop sign ahead signs put up there also because it is kind of a blind coming around to it.
I thought they were just doing peace.
I think it was, yes, no, but there was quite a furor over the folks that lived on Myers Road.
Because posting, and I don't even think it's posted for 30, but a posting between 30 and 35 is kind of insignificant because if the person who's not going to do 30 isn't going to do 35 either.
Right, right.
You know?
They're going to zip.
So I'll have those posted and this is just really for discussion. This, this is probably the ugliest one I've had to go through because it was everywhere and for some reason they kept every single page. This book was kind of a mess, so this will just tidy it up. It'll be easier for the sheriffs and the troopers and everybody else too because here it is. And this one obviously lacks a lot of legalese that will go into this that has to flesh it out and you'll have to go to the attorney also first before we go anywhere with it. But I'll get it on the webpage so that people can look at it and if they have a comment about their road on here, then you can see what we can do about it. The next ones coming up are two that just need to be rescinded because they have no meaning anymore. One would be the Shasbury landfill regulations. We don't have a landfill, so this is just a dated thing that needs to go. And the other one is the, transportation, construction improvements. Well, that's superseded by what we just passed earlier this evening is the town. Yeah, the town road standards. This is just one that's laying around there that just needs to go. So I'd ask the board to vote to rescind the landfill regulations because we don't have a landfill and the, we don't have an active landfill, which is what that was talking about. The closed landfill is tightly regulated by the state, so we can say whatever we want, but we can't do anything about it. And the Shasbury policy for transportation, construction improvements because that's superseded by the road and bridge standards we passed earlier.
You think it's okay to take them as one?
Yes.
Entertain a motion to, that we rescind the Shasbury landfill regulations, Shasbury policy for transportation and construction improvements.
So moved.
Moved by Tony?
Second.
Seconded by Joe. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, carry 500. Thank you.
The last one that I just want to point out, things that are, need groups working on that during COVID, just before it got bad, we took up between the DPW zoning and I, the access to town highways, which is basically the curb cut thing. Ours is, is kind of unwieldy. You just want to clean it up so that you can just get your driveway, you know, done without a big production. Ours is a big production now, so we'll be working on that. And then burning and disposable waste is something else that we started at the beginning of COVID and just kind of fell off the wayside. We need to just update that. And the rest of these, the rest of them on the list I gave you are pretty straightforward and I'll just be updating those. We, we started this project before COVID and like a lot of things, it kind of got put on the side for, for a while. But, you know, we have this book and when we're done with this, probably in a couple of months, it'll be up to date and, you know, you can keep better track of it.
Okay.
All right.
Anything else? Transfer station ramp bids. You have specifications to go out?
Yeah, we finally got the completed plans so that we'll be ADA compliant and everything else with the, with the ramps. We also have delivery of all the new containers they came in, so, which is nice because, you know, we get to measure twice before we build the ramps to make sure that they actually are the height we were quoted. So I just wanted to remind the board, going back to September 20th to 21, the board requested the disbursement of $45,286.67 from GW Hawkins. Part of that, well, as you remember, we'll win to $10,000 of that, win to replace the server that crashed downstairs that basically runs the town and the other $35,000 was to go to the transfer station to take care of the ramps and housing Shelley, you know, but Shelley's housing is quite nice now. I actually talked to that company about maybe just buying that from them and dropping the wheels off and putting it on the ground because it is quite nice. It's similar to the one we had here when we were redoing Cole Hall and it's very warm in the winter and very cool in the summer. It's been a big improvement for them over there, to say the least. But we need to go ahead with the ramps because that's when we started, we're always saving money. We're doing very well, I think, at the transfer station on the Casella, but cutting our haulage, every time they pick up a container, it costs us anywhere from $180 to $250. So the fewer containers that go out, the more money we're saving. These are double the size of the ones we have now, so we could get some good savings. We'll make up the money for building this really in no time. So I just want to remind the board that I'm going to put this out to bid, probably months before it's built at the rate things are going now, but we'll get it underway. And like I said, Casella told me the other day that they received the containers, they're over in the yard over here and they don't care, they can sit there until we're done, so.
At one time you thought that the crew could do this, but this is, the design is way beyond that.
Oh, yeah, we even had trouble, I don't have the wording in front of me, but there's a certain type of, of pillar that had to be built.
A lot like that one?
Yeah, yeah, but it was something to go on the ground because of the way the concrete blocks are and something and it turned into a real production.
I'm sure, okay.
And even getting estimates now can sometimes take forever, you know, because that was one of the hangups, we just couldn't get a response, you know, it's, there's so many people doing so many things out there right now and such a shortage of materials, it's hard to even get people to respond. So we'll go ahead with that and like I said, as soon as it's up, as soon as the containers are in, the sooner we start saving money, so we want to get that done.
Sidewalk scoping study?
Well, we need a selection committee, which isn't a big deal. I nominate Mike because it's, he's on the liaison here, so.
You didn't make your fucking out here.
What it'll be, it's, the bids are going to be, went out already. PCRC, who is, is contracted by us to oversee this for us, will have a list of proposed contractors and we just need a selection committee, which would be, you know, I would say myself, if you want to do it, because it's there and Mike and I definitely and anybody else who, it's just to pick the contractor and then we can start talking about bringing the people from the neighborhood back in as we develop this thing so they can talk to the planners, because it'll turn into a big production. So if that's all right with you, then.
So we're talking about the Grandview?
Yeah, the Hawks and Grandview, yeah. The bids went out last month, they're due the end of this month. The selection committee, which is what we're talking about here, would just sit down with Mike Anders and go through them and maybe interview some of the contractors, some of the bidders and see what they're going to do. Contract is the wrong word because it's planning, it's design, so, and that'll probably take beginning to end nine months to design the thing before we get a plan out.
Sure.
Okay. And anybody else, of course, who wants to join in? But I'll have Mike there too because he'll be able to look at a lot. Mike built a lot of sidewalks and everything else, so, and drainage, because a big part of that, as we all know, is going to be how do you get the water down the hill if you have sidewalks.
Whatever, I know they halted the ditching they were doing, I guess about a year ago, would that, are they going to go back and finish the other side?
Yeah, it's, they didn't, they kind of ended where they were, but it all works fine, it's all greened in nice.
Mike just says it wasn't worth it.
Yeah, and we'll see. Yeah, it'll be, it'll be interesting design and cost estimate will be very interesting. Yeah, I think that is it for me.
Other business. I think, are you still trying to get in touch with some of the officers, the health officer, animal control officer? Because we said, we put that off until this meeting as to make their appointments because you were going to check to make sure that they were all.
Yeah, you can consider them appointed because I both have them doing things right now, so. They didn't voice any objection when I was on the phone with them yesterday and today, so. Now, I forgot to ask them directly whether they wanted to be reappointed because we were talking about an animal problem, we were talking about a health department problem.
So you don't need a vote or anything?
No, I should probably ask them formally first, but I think they would have told me, aren't I done yet?
Okay, so.
I will ask them, yeah.
And, and my last thing is that I think a couple of meetings ago, I spoke about Lake Perrin is looking into water, the mill foil and all that sort of stuff in Lake Perrin and I just thought that somebody from Shasbury should be on that committee that's looking into that and that sort of stuff because the water is coming through Shasbury and that type of thing, so Shasbury has a lot, I think part of the lake is in Shasbury, so. And so if anybody would volunteer for that, if not, I'm going to start making some phone calls because I think somebody should be on it, okay? That's, you may do going out to the public, okay, unless somebody on the board wants to do it too, so. Action items? to the public, okay, unless somebody on the board wants to do it too, so. Action items? You're going, you've got quite a list?
Yeah, we'll be taking care of the resolution. I have a whole lot of bids to put out.
You've got four bids to put out?
And hopefully, we'll continue working on the ordinances, and I'll get the ordinances posted. We have the selection committee, so...
And Martha, you're going to come back with us?
I've got a lot to do, yes. So I will work on, yes. Coming back on the Harwood study thing, and I will get together with David to get that economic development study that was done 20 years ago, if we can find a copy of it.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah.
And then certainly I can put out the speed zoning ordinance to...
Yeah.
Just the community that I have, and just see if anybody has anything to say about...
See if anybody thinks anything should change.
Yeah.
Okay. Any other business? Anybody got anything? Okay, all set. Entertain a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Moved by Tony? Seconded by Mike. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
So carry. Thank you very much for your time. Here's a one.
Cat TV is celebrating 30 years of community media. Help support Cat TV's next 30 years by becoming a member today. Your membership will help us continue covering meaningful local content. Thank you for supporting your local community media station.